We are not able to spend your money or the tax payers' money.
Ms. Turner and I have had this big question, other conversation this as far as, and I haven't attended one of your meetings, so I don't know what the big scope of your vision is down the road, but that the funds wouldn't be used like you mentioned right now, that you know, a ballot goes out, things like that, that should still come out of like the actual city maintenance fund, the parks fund that we have set for here, so that way that would be the onus and focus of using your funds for the larger spectrum, you know, whether improving the little league fields or, you know, putting new bathrooms at the basketball court here at the Peacock Park, improving the actual parks, so that way they wouldn't run to you every time we're bleeding like, oh, we need help from the Parks Department.
You're right, that would be our contention would be that it be for the larger plan. And I believe Councilor Nieto, when EDC presented our budget and they talked about setting aside a dollar amount, and I believe you had them to increase it because they said you have a plan. And one of the things I can see the Park Foundation being a very integral part is helping the city to develop a parks plan. And so that leads to grants, and so it all, the little maintenance things in reference to that is not something that I could foresee them having to repair. But actually, we've had someone comment, I know she approached the mayor as well as myself, I'm roughly to replacing net tennis courts and large projects like that, then that's something that we may want to partner with the foundation as well. But I just needed to be, because I think that that was the first time any funds have been used out of that funding sometime, I wanted to make sure I didn't leap over anybody just to consult them. If they had said no, I was going to bring and ask you anyway, but I need to be able to say to start that. And I have been actually done the liaison, so I attended most of those meetings that I can attend. I attended part of me, met with the Hart Foundation when I met them at TML and brought them to present to the council. So I think it's very intricate that we've worked together on the hiking bike trail and other big parts, but I have to agree, yes, it's more of a big picture, not the small maintenance things.
One other thing that I might go back and remind us all about, when we set up the dollar on the bills, we were looking for some money to match with the state and using the San Antonio River Authority's park plan to qualify for state funding. And then if that legislative session or legislature appropriated, you know, money for the state side of the dock. We do have an item tonight, 4A, which is broadly enough conceptualized. It could include some parks activities for matching purposes. And it's an item that's coming back.
Say it again, did you hear the last word?
4A could come back to you and include parks.
Would you see to the G? So the grants, Grant Works, and I want to thank you all for providing us with Grant Works. Grant Works works this way, if they get the grant, there's administrative portion to that, if they get that administrative fee, whatever that fee is, but they also give us whatever smaller grants that doesn't have administrative fee, and parks definitely falls into that portion, and parks is part of the problem, and even programs. And even if they talk about a comprehensive plan, of course, parks will be part of our comprehensive plans. We plan for our wonderful city in the future, so those are kind of things that we're going to be able to do.
Actually, 4A could include that too when they may have their meeting.
Mayor, this young lady has a question.
Thanks for saying that. I just want to mention that the Wilson County Pigeons are going to do another fundraiser. We haven't finalized everything, but hopefully we'll be utilizing Eric Rodriguez with this and his facility, so we still have to make the plan. Also, Henrietta, I have a question for you. Did anybody submit any names to be on the 4A board? Were any submitted, or any forms submitted?
There were several forms that were submitted that we gave to the council at the last meeting. I believe the city secretary, I could tell you the names.
I gave you everything that the previous, on the December 11 meeting, that was everybody that I received on the 4A and 4B. Today, we have two more that I received since that December 11 meeting on 4B, but I have not received any other applications.
Okay, because Pete submitted one quite some time ago. Is there an interview process?
It was included in their packet.
But is there an interview process? How is it determined who will disturb on?
May through appointment. The council.
Okay, but you don't interview the person or anything to find out there? Yes, sir? Just some of the other things.
Just one more comment, Mayor, I wanted to make sure that we recognized Daniel Tejada for the efforts that we started years ago on Heartland, and I've heard them mentioned by Ms. Henrietta again. This is an initiative that we started a long time ago, but there seems to be the problem of, you know, you're in the city limits, or you're out of the city limits, you're in, you're out, I don't think that's the case. I think that we all want the same thing, whether you live in the city limits or not. It's the people that want good and the people that don't. And you had somebody sitting on that council that didn't want good that stopped that. So please don't do that again, because Mr. Doug Jones right there, he's working hard on that Parks Foundation. And if we got anybody else that wants to be on there, then he should be on there. But don't, don't, don't look past yourselves, sit and learn, because y'all make the decisions. The 4A board and the loss of direction started up there. 4A board knew where they wanted to go, but, you know, the negative, the evil that's within our community, do it. You're really a person of Christ, then remember that, because everyone's got to pay him at the end of the day, okay? Thank you.
So I have my direction in reference to the boards. I will set up those meetings and let you know, and hopefully come up with a comprehensive thing. That's the end of my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henrietta. Thank you, Mr. Doug, for your service.
No action taken on G. But we will advertise, right?
So there was action taken.
That was what we were looking for.
That's what you're looking for, is direction.
Right.
And so taking it that the council's consented or direction is advertise?
Well, I think that should just be an automatic, you can't be getting anything like this, that you just automatically advertise, and that would just definitely be good.
All right, let's make that in a formal motion, so there's no question about it.
Make the motion to advertise for...
Make that a routine process for board appointments.
I'd like to make the motion to...
Make it probably a routine process to...
Make it a routine process to see board appointment, board appointment.
Can it be directed from council if Parks Foundation technically isn't appointed by council?
Correct. We understand that's the case now.
Yes.
That's listed as part of the item here.
They need to say 4A and 4N though.
Correct. Stand corrected.
Well, there are more than those two boards.
Well, that's true.
So... Yes, and so then we'll table this too, so we can include the remainder of the board.
Let's at least include these two. So there's no doubt.
What are the chances of it that they throw it back to the council now?
It could be on the next agenda, I assure you, it'll be on the 22nd agenda, if you care to, that we could go on all boards, because I'm asking you to create a new board. And so you can say, if you want to make it generic, we can just say all boards can advertise, if you care to make it generic, whatever board exists.
Please add an exception.
Well, we're not going to...
When you say all boards...
You're about to say parks, yes.
But it's still a board of directors.
But they have no jurisdiction to appoint.
What if we just say 4A, 4N, and 4Z, because the item high, we're addressing 4B, and there you can bring that again. And then we got the...
Did you know that was close to birthday?
And he turned evil to benevolent. But it's not in the house.
Okay.
So the motion is?
Make the motion to... To make it a routine.
To advertise for all boards. Or for 4A?
For 4A and 4A and B and Z boards.
4A is a board. Okay, the motion, Mayor, a second.
To include those boards there.
I second it.
Second, by Councilor Henrietta, Councilor Tejada, have you heard?
Could you repeat the motion again? The motion to...
To make sure and advertise for those two boards, 4A, 4N, and 4B later.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Henrietta, you can just stay here the rest of the night.
Yes, ma'am. Consideration and action to establish a visitor tourist bureau board. Okay, this is exciting for me, because it's something I've been working on for some time. I know that the Chamber of Commerce was working, and so the mayor and I have had many discussions in reference to that. And so I've brought this to you before, but I tweaked it a lot. When I brought it to you before, I was asking for a 15-member board. I don't know when I was smoking at the time. But sometimes I'm learning that a board, the smaller the... And so in this recommendation for the finalization, I'm asking for seven members in that 15. We limited, I do want to have hopefully two representatives from the council to select, but also a member from the Chamber of Commerce, a member from EDC, a representative from the Wilson County, and a representative from the hospital. Now, hot tax is a hot topic, and I don't have to look to my attorney, because I know that we can use hot tax to fund a tourism bureau. I cannot express how important it is for me and my job, as well as Tommy Baker and his job in reference to it. I keep telling people, I can tell the story a whole lot better in Florisville if I know the story, if I have the pamphlets to put out, if I have the marketing advertising, if we can do this on social media, if we can get us an app, all those kind of things, we can use hot tax for. And I've put a sample of even a sign, a sign to talk about your historical downtown, a direction of sign to have people come, a sign on the city hall, even a sign at your community convention center can all be used under the hot tax. But we need to start with the tourism bureau, because we need to be able to, regardless of whatever direction you give to 4A, I need more than wedding and kinceñas at that region. I need somebody, I need to have conventions there. And so what I'm hoping to do is advertise to market. So you can use hot tax to be able to hire a marketing company, a PR company, to come in, put the pretty brochures together, to help us on the website, to be able to do. You can use hot tax to hire staff, professional staff, if that's what they do, to be able to market and get those convention centers going, buy equipment. All those things are eligible under the hot tax. But we don't have a functioning tournament, it's not functioning. The phone calls, and I'm not faulting anybody, I inherited it, I don't know, I'm not faulting anybody, I'm just saying, it's not doing what it's designed to do. And I'm hoping that we can come up with a mission statement, a vision to be, to get the marketing. So you can hire a marketing firm that'll come to you, you give them the mission of what you want to be able to do, so I can pass out a welcome book when people come to town, so I can let everybody know what churches we have, all the amenities we have, the beautiful hiking bike trail with both bridges. I need to be able to advertise and to market that as I go out to get grants, as Tommy goes out to get developers, people come for the amenities of your community, and I need to be able to advertise that. You have so much, of course, oh my goodness, it is a great entity. We need to be able to brag about us being an equal forest shelter, we are the gateway to the equal forest shelter. I need to be able to advertise that, to articulate that in writing, publicly on all of our websites together. Our website looks a little different, EDC, we need to bring it all in, but I need professional people to do that. I can use hot tax to do that. And what we're hoping to do is to come and do this to me, so once you hire somebody for marketing, they talk to them, then they come back, and of course, you all have the ultimate power to say, yes, we like it, no, we don't, this is how we wanted to represent it, but we're hoping that we can get something like that going. But I need to be able to establish that. I need to be able to market my community.
And you, do you ask, two members from the council?
Two members?
One from EDC?
Not from the council.
Oh.
Two members that will represent the city of Florisville.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because you can't be on the council, you can't be on a board. So I'm asking for two representatives that you all select, and then somebody from over the Chamber of Commerce selects, and send somebody from Florisville, EDC, and somebody from the school district, for them to send us a representative. But I need you all to say, this is legitimate committee, because they're using public funds, of course, it has to be open meeting, but you will have two representatives on that. I think it's important for you to have a weighted vote, so that you can say, it represents clearly who you all select, it represents someone. It could be somebody who already have a board that you just selected the other day, it could not be anybody on staff.
Henrietta?
Yes, sir?
Is there a visitors and tourist revision of the FDCC too? Their revision?
Well, it can be. Part of what FDCC does, bringing in housing, bringing, yes, it is part of their vision, which is why they would need to have a representative on this committee as well.
And that, and you had included that in...
Yes, I included EDC to have representative on this.
Correct, as well as the county, as well as the hospital.
I'm trying to pinpoint it down, the funding, you want to take some funds from the hotel taxes, but we still can use some funding from the FDCC.
We would need funding from FDCC, because the purpose of the tourist bureau is to bring people here to put heads in bed. Whenever you talk about hot tax or hotel motel tax, it's all about heads in bed.
Doesn't the chamber do that?
The chamber is loyal to the chamber members, so no, they don't. The chamber is loyal to their members who pay a membership fee. That's their loyalty, that's their kind, that's their bread and butter. For a hotel motel, their purpose, reason why you can tax them, is to get more people to come, so it's kind of like they cost you money to make money. So you need to be able to say, I'm marketing the city of Florisville, for people to come here so they can stay.
So eventually, they're going to be funded.
Eventually, they will.
The visitors and tourists are going to, they're going to want some money from the city.
The hotel motel tax, yes.
The council will be making that decision.
Okay.
Yep, so the council would say, okay, we want you to go out and market, we want you to go out and get us some things, we want to have staff that can do that, the council would decide to do that. But that's all you can use hotel motel tax for, is to advertise and market your town, to bring heads to bed, to bring bodies here to stay in the hotel, we're hoping that they stay. So that's the purpose of the hotel motel tax, so that's the only thing you can use it for. And typically, historically, the Florisville, or they have tourism bureau, that's where they get their money from. You can tell them how much, you can say, you can have $100,000, and that's all you all can do to market it, or you can say we can reserve some other, there's a lot of things we can do with the hotel motel tax, but definitely a tourism, tourism visitor bureau you need to have, so that we can have a place on the website, so that we can have orchestration, and they have to partner with other entities, but it's very important for us to be able to do that, especially since we want to have more. One of the things that's happening with our community center is that basically all of the money that we collect for 4A is going to go to the desk, so we need some operation and some maintenance money. Well, it's not, kinceñas and weddings are not going to do it. I mean Gloria is doing a young man's job and booking that place. She's talking about booking in 2017, I don't think about it right now, Gloria. But we need to be able to have somebody come and give us direction from a marketing standpoint, a professional firm, and that we can hire staff that can be qualified enough to be able to say, here, this is what they do, to have a small conference there, to have a small event there, whether it be musical or whatever, but we need to be able to do that.
Ms. Taylor, what's...
Our last workshop was with Mr. Kiroga, he has specified that it needs to be marketed, especially the convention center, that it has to be marketed a lot better, so that you can distinguish the difference, that you're actually bringing people from outside of Florisville into Florisville, mainly because the weddings in kinceñas, you really can't specify that you're bringing people from outside in.
But we looked at, we had Gloria to look at people who had come and, you know, stayed, and so most of it is all local. And so what we want, remember, when we're, we know it's a great venue, I think it's a great venue, but when people are looking at it on a paper, then all they're seeing is what is in kinceñas, what are you doing? So that it's going to be in, you know, a local event, so we want to be able to be able to put it out there. Gloria could probably do a whole lot better if we had advertising, you got to have a commercial. We don't have any commercials, we don't take any advertising to put it in a newspaper, it's word of mouth, people know it's here. I tell you, hotel tax, you need to use that, but you need to be able to not use it helter-skelter. You need to be able to say, here's a tourism bureau, they came and made a recommendation to the council, council approved it, I can put it in my budget, I have nothing now, other than it just rolling up. When we go for it, it's going to be very important to the community center as we talk about funding it and going forward, and OEM, operation maintenance is definitely something, it needs to support itself, it has to support itself. Or it needs to break even, but it doesn't make me happy, but I can live with breaking even. Costing me money, going into my general fund, going into my, my general pool, my comptroller's going to be spanking me on the hands pretty soon, because you cannot be able to do that. It has to be a break even, self-sustaining entity.
Yes, we should make money, not break even.
So did you state...
We have to break even before we make money first, I got, that's the right direction, I'm sorry.
You stated that we were, we could deal with the hotels, we need to be specific as to wanting events. The event center is bringing this, the bedrock, and we'll be able to use that money.
The Hotel Motel Association that we passed out the literature for says that part of the marketing process has to be some way to systematically demonstrate that you're bringing people in. And one of the other incentives in this thing is you're authorized to give up the one quarter of the tax, one quarter percent of the tax to the hotel motel people to make sure that they're getting you the right amount of money. When I went to Austin recently, stayed two nights, I ended up paying $32 in taxes to the city of Austin for their hotel motel tax.
Yes, we can even use the hotel motel tax to pay for an auditor, which I'm going to bring to you very soon again, to audit the hotel motel tax to make sure that we're receiving all the funding, because I don't think we are. But I need to be able to start it, to have it going forward, and the timing is perfect right now, because it's real looking and focusing on the community center, that's what's important, that we have it being able to function, that we're able to fund and market, that we're able to have our social media, to have a sign to talk about our wonderful historical downtown, we need to be able to do that. We need to have some signs, EDC, a council spent their money to fix that wonderful sign up there on 181, that kind of curled up on the end, so we've worked in partnership together, but we need to be able to have a focus. Money, it always comes down to money, and so this particular time, we have the money, we just need to be able to use it correctly. So what I'm asking, because I need to go home, because I know you want to go celebrate.
Yes.
Elvis's birthday.
King's birthday.
What I want to be able to do is ask you to formally make this a board. Then the attorney came, read out the bylaws, that we got the standards, I'll bring them back to you, but what I'm asking is to formally make it a board, please.
I do, I do want to say something, I want to make it clear. That the event center, when you're talking about weddings in kinceñas, those are not solicited events. These are people who are looking somewhere to have their wedding and their kinceña, or birthday party, or a family reunion, because only two choices they have here is either that or the show barn. And by far, our event center is much better. But what you're looking for is someone that's going to bring other businesses, like, I know she has job fairs out there, but can you imagine how many more job fairs we could have, more, she's got meeting rooms available. She doesn't have the time to be out there soliciting. We need someone that's going to be able to go around surrounding towns or whatever. There are people from East San Antonio everywhere having their prompts there, we can reach out to more schools.
You have, I agree, Mayor, you have something right here, what, February is San Antonio, and I just saw in the paper that they went for the fifth year in a row, that that's the best rodeo that they have right there in San Antonio. We have no pre or post events right here, and we can host those, for those people who have a lot of money, they want to have private parties or whatever, we could have a room right here suburb of San Antonio that drive up. How many people in this room go to San Antonio today?
Every day.
I got to talk. I was trying to set up.
Okay. Sir, for the record, please tell who you are.
Thank you for the record gift there with your...
I forget your name. My name is Rick Antu, I live here in Florisville. Marketing, I mean, people can go to any city they want you. Get a professional marketer that has a slogan, that has a picture, that has a gimmick that, go to Florisville because they seen the Chupacabra there, or whatever, you know? But something from professional marketers that got a plan, come to Florisville, you got to come to Florisville, because the Pino Festival is something you got to see, because you got to come to our event center. You got to come and bring, you know, your band here, you got to come in, you know, have your party here. A professional, like she says, that has the gimmick, that knows how to get these things going, so people want to come to Florisville and just hang out. How many people go to, what is it, Fredericksburg, to the place over there, they want to go to Fredericksburg, just to see what Fredericksburg's about, so why can't that, we have that here in Florisville? And in my hospital, here in Florisville, Ryan came in and he started a tremendous marketing deal. And man, we're, we're, we're growing, 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 and getting more and more patients all the time, and our hospital's getting bigger and better and everything else, and just because of the dedication he put onto marketing. So marketing, it's hard to see that, because you got to put money in there, but if you get that gimmick, we could be just like Fredericksburg, or Bernie, or you know.
Booking by... You were breaking, I didn't...
You didn't, be sure to put on your, put in your resume, Mr. Rick.
And that's why we also want to include the hospital, because we need to be able to have everybody come together, because everybody has a point of view. And Florisville is the bomb, we just need to tell everybody else out there that we are the best thing coming. We are here, we're close enough, people want to get out of the city, I've learned from being here a short period of time, people don't want to be in traffic, people don't want to be in the city, they want to come out and have that country living, that what it used to be, that downtown, where you can walk to store to store and buy the homemade this or the sorret, or to get a confetti egg, or to get all those things that you all do, that's so exciting to me. But we have to do it the right way, you cannot do it with just staff putting it together. I need the professionals to be able to do that, and whatever they come up with, you have to approve it. You have to say yes and sign off on it, so that when you're in the HEB and somebody's saying, hey, I heard that, where'd they commercial, where'd you get that from, I mean, wouldn't, why does keep presenting a radio commercial? I was a little kid, did you hear this? They say, did you hear on the radio? Those kind of things we need to be able to have, and I need you to be able to feel comfortable with it, but it starts with you. You would actually do that, and we can have them come and present to you. So again, I'm just asking that we need to establish that, we have the money to do that. Those hotels need to be filled with other things than the guys who work on the oil field. So we can talk about discounts, all those kind of things, we need to be able to put together. So I'm hoping that you can file out this board, I'll bring it back to you when we have the standard type of agreement, but I need you to make it real wide, give birth that they're dating tonight.
Ms. Turner, one other question. We're talking about two different things here. I'm hearing you're talking about hiring professionals, which I agree with publicly, hiring a marketing firm, but you're also talking about creating a five-member board, where is the interaction between the professional and the five-member board?
The seven-member board would be...
Seven-member board.
Okay, once you hire that professional, that, that marketing company would work with that board, and that board would help to develop in multiple meetings, to come up with a marketing plan of what they want to do for the community center, as well as the city of Florisville. Once they come up with a plan that they think is, then they would bring it to you, and then you get to tweak the plan. So what you get, it starts with you making it a board, then you tell me to go hire a marketing person, or bring the marketing person to you all, and so we need they to do so, it's a, it's a two-fold kind of thing.
Can you imagine better that, once that board is selected, that you put them together with the council, so that the council can tell them what their vision is and what their hopes are, so that they can come back with something developed?
Yes, ma'am, and my direction that I got earlier tonight was that you all want to meet with those, and I'm so happy that you agreed to those off-week meetings, so that we can get those going. And that would definitely be a board, once we formulate it, after we advertise it, and people come with you all, actually repeat with them and give them direction of where they want to go, when we would have the meetings for the consultants or wherever the marketing person, that would involve you as well of that board. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to make the motion to establish a visitor and tourist bureau board.
A second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Nunez, second by Councilor Nofiz. Councilor Mahal, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilor Neta?
Yes.
Councilor Neta?
Yes.
And motion carries, I see you. Thank you.
You can do a backflip, you have that one right there.
Okay, I need to hurry, because Councilor Neta has to do his birthday party at the house for Elvis, so he's invited. Item four. Item four, I, consideration and action to appoint you members to the four B board. Councilman DeHalle?
As the newest member of the council, I'd like to, uh, appoint Chris Palamontes to the four B board.
Point of order, can I? I, I know none of these terms are, have, have been, are up, but, I mean, can we, at least for transparency purposes, ask why the, one of the members is being replaced? And which one?
Because you have to take one out because they spoke.
Okay, who are the four newest ones?
Mayor. Um, Mayor Helen Teaken was appointed to eleven, Fred Gonzalez was appointed to eleven of 2014, Andy Jossna was appoint, Andy Jossna, or Andy, was appointed to eleven, 2014, as well as Jake Coolen was appointed on 2011, 2014. Uh, the remaining three people that we, Mr. Tally, Mr. Lambert, and Mr. Jones, uh, not expired until 2015.
What was the last, who was the last?
Uh, Mr. Tally, Ray Lambert, and David Jones, terms expired in 2015.
So they expired at the end of this year?
Yes, and I believe we move their, their year to be December, is that right now?
December.
Your, 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 your year, that's about, now, December, so it'll be December of 2015.
I'll, I'll just go from the bottom here, it says David Jones. A second.
Okay, a motion to remove David Jones from the FEDC board, replace with Chris?
Chris Palamontes.
Chris Palamontes. Motion by my councilman DeHalle, second by councilman Ortiz. Councilman Neta, have you voted?
Yes.
Councilman Gede?
No.
Councilman Delius?
No.
Okay.
Let's take it, we go, one, two.
Motion, what, two?
I have a case, please.
Motion, please, let's take it.
They wanna fill one, my case.
For the, for the, for the other?
Right. You wanna, you need, uh, Jason Tally and, uh, Ramiro Delius.
Okay, a motion by councilman Ortiz to remove J.C. Tally, and replace him with, uh, W. Delius. Can I have a second?
Oh, second.
Councilman Neta, have you voted?
No.
Councilman Gede?
No.
Councilman Delius?
No.
Excuse me, mayor, I heard you taking a vote, is this due to a comment for minutes?
If you have some sort of-
Yes, I would like to know why. Why are we all of a sudden, now that we have a new member on the city council?
Two new members.
Two new members, um, that were replacing these members on the board. I mean, just why, was there some issue that they weren't working well together with you? Or they weren't doing their job, they were coming to the meetings, why?
I think one of the members, one of the members-
Excuse me, mayor.
One of the members probably has reason to, to, to take one off, but the other one, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not sure, because he hasn't had enough, in that time long, counsel to say, you know, that this boy younger hasn't been able to perform.
I would think in the student's interest, if they're not performing, yes, they need to be removed, but if they are performing, is this a self-serving situation where you're trying to appoint others on? Mr. Tahadi?
I think in the past, can I answer that?
I'll go ahead.
In the past, it's al, it's always been done that way, that every time there's a new councilman, they not even be a councilman, because really, councilman Anto, councilman Gede, and councilman Delius could also do the same thing right now, at any given time.
Well, why do you have it set up that it's a two-year tenure, and you have an expiration date of that tenure?
That's why I'm saying that here, that we need to look at the bylaw.
Yeah.
And we said- Then you ought not to do what you're doing now, because you're asking people without a cause given to us, and you, you, you talked about how you're gonna do your appointments to the other boards. It, it doesn't make my-
It's just like, if, years ago with Martha Flores, and the millionaire was all, I mean, they had that purpose, you know, behind the center.
She spoke the truth, that she was removed immediately.
Exactly.
Remember history, you're gonna repeat it.
Yeah. Why would anybody want to serve?
Oh, look, I need a calendar.
I'll go and make the motion to, uh, to reappoint Jason Tally.
Look, it's a die.
Well.
Jason Tally didn't pass.
Okay, he, he wasn't removed, right?
It's Mr. Jones.
Mayor, the record, what did you do over the following block earlier on the other one? Do you want, about-
Did you take it back off the network?
Are you hearing the last item already?
Yeah, but we said that we were gonna tell you, I didn't lie, when we were talking about, uh-
Did you have a bose tape? Yeah, the bose tape, yeah. It's here, it's gonna take about an hour, but I don't. Bose tape, right.
Okay. The last item that we have on our agenda is item four J, consideration and action to approve the agreement between the city of Florisville and the Wilson County Memorial Hospital District for public location.
All it is, mayor, is that in May, the hospital board has an election. And although, at this point, we do not have an election in May, they wanna use the chamber for their early voting and election day, to have somebody here to, for people to come and be able to vote on the hospital board.
This chair.
This room, this room.
We checked the dates, and it doesn't conflict with any of our meetings. So we don't have to relocate ourselves, uh, and I think we've held it, they've held them before, previously, when we had our elections in May, so they're asking, and so it's on the agenda for the approval.
Is that exciting?
Yes, ma'am.
No, but they have early voting days.
They have early voting as well.
And everything, and then the rest, and then it'll locally alternate the, the, the voting days. I believe it's, it starts April twenty-seventh, and then it goes through, and then May, what, fourth, or whatever day that is, and then they have their election day, is, is where they would be in here. So we wouldn't be able to use in here while they're having their election.
But we did check our dates, and even the court dates, it is no conflict.
Correct.
And I'll go and make the motion to, to approve the agreement between the city of Florisville and the Wilson County Memorial Hospital District for public location.
Do you have a motion by councilman Delius, may I have a second?
A second?
You second?
Just put John in, it'll be clear.
Councilman DeHalle, have you voted?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion carries, I see.